Wow, okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the first time using the gavel for me. So, thank you. We're off to a good start. Welcome, everyone. This is the Sparks Planning Commission meeting of April 4th, 2019. I successfully called the meeting to order with the gavel. Item number two is roll call. Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Commissioner Carey.
President.
Commissioner Reed. Patson. Commissioner Blakow.
Here.
Commissioner Brock.
Here.
Commissioner Ewens.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Ornales.
Here.
Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to item number three, which is a general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to provide general public comments relating to the agenda or not. I will note, if you're here for Wild Creek High School, there will be a public comment period at that time, too. I did receive two cards to speak during this general public comment period. The first one is Darlene Hess. Hess, come on up if you'd like to still speak. You have three minutes when you're ready, Darlene. Just please state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name's Darlene Hess. I live by the Wild Creek Golf Course. And what else did you want me? My address?
Address, please.
3035 Malapie Way, Sparks, Nevada, 89431. You know, I've made it my mind, I'd like to go on the positive side now and work with the property, the remaining property that supposedly, that we're going to have a golf course and work with the county commission and all because of schools going forward, which I'm very much against. I'm not against schools and all, but I'm very much against a school being built on a $32 million property that the people have paid for through our tax dollars and building a $400 million school. That's unbelievable. I mean, it's just like, and the traffic, that's horrendous. And, you know, there's 140-page traffic study. It's unbelievable to me. All you have to do is go down to the corner and stand and look at all of the traffic on McCarran. It's going to be a nightmare. It's not going to be just a nightmare, it's going to be standstill traffic and people are going to be very upset about all of this when all this takes place. And to widen Sullivan Lane and to widen, or I don't know if they're widening, I can't remember, El Rancho, but it's a shame. I just think that the school could have been in a different area. And there's so many minuses. They're not pluses for us. I've lived there 41 years and I'm telling you, this is a beautiful property. It's a property for animals, too, and people to all enjoy. And I hope to heck that the people, the county and City of Sparks and Reno realize that this property should be the remaining park for people to enjoy because it is just a tremendous area. It's lovely. Like today, I don't know, it looked like there were eagles out there, five eagles. I couldn't believe it. I haven't seen an eagle there for like five years. And then yesterday, they had pelicans, two pelicans flying around. This is going to be a hardship on all of the animals, the birds. I mean, I enjoy it all. I like to hear the golfers, they're having a wonderful time out there. And it's just a beautiful property that shouldn't be lost. It's just in the, schools going in the wrong area is going to cause a tremendous amount of grief for the city of Sparks. And when the flooding starts, which I've seen it flood so many times, and they say that that can be engineered, but we think anything can be engineered, but at what cost? What cost to engineer all these things? I mean, moving power poles, widening streets, I mean, it's just unbelievable. When you could go up and buy $10 acre property up in the Sun Valley area where they've always wanted a high school, and that's where it makes the most sense to me. I just think that that golf course has been really taken advantage of by the county. I don't know about the county, but the RSCVA has done not very much for it. And I surely wish I would have been a golfer and I would have complained a lot. I go over there now and I see how the roof is in such bad repair, the bathroom's leaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. That was, that was almost worse than my gavel. I have another, another couple, too, signed up for a public comment. Kathleen Shoup. And behind that is Wesley Griffin. You're on deck. This is the general public comment period. You have three minutes. Just please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name's Kathleen Shoup and I live on Malapie Way, 4975 Malapie, near Sparks. There are a couple of things that I read in the studies that were done that I would like to bring up. Part of the compliance plan policy says that landscaping and revegetation with native plants will be included in this. And then it includes a portion of the golf course on the parcel to be acquired by Washoe County School District. But it's not needed for, the part of the parcel that is not needed for school facilities. So, if they don't need all of that land for the school facilities, then why are they getting all that land? And another issue was, especially a concern of mine is, is the public safety portion that was addressed. And the fire department has requested to put in a road of access, aside from just the main entrances to the school property. But I haven't seen anything about increased police activity. The police are going to be very important. I've read a study, it's very thick, and I didn't bring it with me, but it addresses the increase in crime rates in high school areas. If you drop a high school into our area, we are going to see crime, a lot of crime brought into our nice peaceful little neighborhood. Another thing was the traffic study concludes that Weddiken Road north of McCarran Boulevard is not going to be expected to see additional traffic or any impact. Now, perhaps the students are all going to be coming from Sun Valley or in that area, so they probably won't be using Weddiken, but the teachers and the other staff that run the school, the janitorial staff and whomever, they're going to be using Weddiken. It was opened up to people's knowledge when they were working on the intersection at Pyramid and McCarran. A lot of people have discovered Weddiken. And now, it's becoming almost like a thoroughfare. There's a lot of traffic on the road and it's going to be much worse for us. It's sometimes very difficult to get out of my road, which is Malapie. And thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next one signed up for general public comment is Wesley Griffin. Following Wesley's is going to be Kim Tracy. Go ahead, Wes.
Yes, I'm Wesley Griffin. I live at 4701 Weddiken Road, over next to Wild Creek Golf Course. For almost the last two years, many of the residents in that area, and different golfers and different people that are for open spaces, green spaces, recreational areas, our lives have been turned upside down coming to meetings like this. We were never given an opportunity to discuss this before it was a done deal supposedly. You might describe us as a ragtag group of citizens. We might be described as a ragtag group of citizens because we don't have millions of dollars to do these kinds of presentations. But I would appeal to your common sense. Let's suppose that Washoe County School District struck a deal with Washoe County to tear down our administration buildings over on 9th Street and Wells Avenue over there and build a school. People would say, "That sounds a little bit ludicrous. Why would we destroy assets like that when there's plenty of other space around? But somehow, because this is a golf course, green space, supposedly, we the citizens don't need that. So we can go in and destroy that and put a school in there." And discussing cost of replacing that, we're talking, I was talking with some professionals the other day and they said, "Design of those holes, about a million bucks a hole. That's not including the land." That's probably worth more than the administration buildings over on, that the county has. And we can all see the difference there. But just basic common sense says, first of all, we need green space recreational areas. We need it. It's not something that, go to some area where they don't provide that for their citizens and just see what kind of an area that is. We need it. So why are we doing this? We don't have a million dollars to go out and put on presentations. We're just concerned citizens. And we need your ear. We need to make sure that there's some human engineering involved in this. How is this affecting our citizens? Not just, you know, how's the traffic going to flow, where's the buildings going to fit, but how is this affecting our citizens? And it's affected us greatly in our time, in our lives. We see, I know personally, I've been around other high schools to see how different things happen. Over at Reed, we've been over during the lunch break, see kids over in the parking lot smoking marijuana. You know, whatever your thoughts on marijuana is, you know, everybody has their own opinion. Welcome to that opinion. I don't think kids should be doing it, especially.
Thanks, Wesley.
We need some human engineering in this.
Appreciate it. The next one we had was Kim Tracy. And Kim, did you want to speak during general comment or did you want to talk during the both? Okay, you're welcome to come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kim Tracy. I'm also here regarding concerns about this building of the high school on the golf course. First, I'd like to say first and foremost, I don't think anything else should be done until we've had the opportunity to denote it a PRS. Because in every way, it certainly is, whether or not it's officially labeled as a project of regional significance, it is a project of huge regional significance. And I think that holds true, not just for people that are living in that area, but everybody who lives out in Spanish Springs, Sparks, everybody who's going to have to travel, coming down Prater Way, because that project is going to be all for naught shortly by the time that school is built. It's already kind of a backlog on the road on McCarran and on Weddiken both. I can attest to that because I live also off of Weddiken Road. And it's unbelievable, the traffic. I think the only thing that's been good for is the motorcycle cops who have heyday over there, ticketing people who are speeding up and down Weddiken at this point. I noticed in the plans, first I should say that Pete Etcher, the COO, did come and speak to our group at one point and he assured us that at no time would the school need more than 60 or 70 acres. And I noticed in the plans now, it says 87 acres, plus or minus 87 acres. I'd like to see that plus or minus taken out. I'd like them to be held foot to the fire, decide how much acreage you need and not extend past that. That's ridiculous, 87 plus or minus. I also noticed that they have the school saying that it will not reach a height of more than 61 feet. That, folks, is a six-story building, if you figure 10 feet per story. That is not something that you can do in the regional plan unless you're a school. I'd like to see them not have that leeway. 61 feet doesn't make any sense. The other thing that doesn't make any sense to me is that they're not holding just the smallest footprint possible. And if they did, they could alleviate wiping out as much of the golf course and green spaces they're doing. And what I'm referring to is they're going to have parking spaces, I think it was for 1,366 spaces. If they're going to make a three-story building, why not make a parking structure and decrease the footprint? We have flooding issues. Everybody says it can be mitigated. We're paying for that. You, me, all of us, we're all paying for mitigating all these issues, the flooding, the traffic. And if we can decrease the cost of that by a one-time expense and building a parking structure rather than putting in widespread parking area and wiping out the green space, that would make more sense to me. So I'd like them to be kind of more definite, more definitive, because this is how this whole thing has gotten so ugly in the first place. Everything's been probably, most likely, won't be, shouldn't be. Those words aren't assuring us in any way. And since there's so little trust and faith in the WCSD, I'd like to see them turn things around with the community and work a little harder at getting us to trust them and to do a better job. And I think that they need to be steered in that direction by folks such as yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We have another request for general public comment. This is Mr. George Lee. Come on up, George. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, George Lee, 3506 Brassie Drive, Sparks. I'm a little bit concerned with the cost and where the money's coming from for all the ancillary stuff. We need to ensure that the school department or the school district is going to supply all the money for all of the ancillary projects that are going to be necessary. And not just, well, we only needed to do this. Because they're not planning on increasing the width of Sullivan Lane. According to the plans that are there, they're only keeping it as a two-lane between the roundabouts, the upper and lower roundabouts. But this is a main thoroughfare, even though it's just a two-lane country road. It's a main thoroughfare that goes up that side of the, the west side of the golf course there. I looked at the drawings on pay in the 160s, they put it at the back, of course, of the roundabouts, and it appears that the roundabouts are bigger on Sullivan Lane than they are on El Rancho, where there's more room to make them. That, to me, is kind of interesting, like they didn't look at it. Also, I'd like to know what the designation as to diameter or width of the roundabouts are. Are the roundabouts, and some of them say 70 with an arrow out to the circumference area, is that a diameter or is that a radius? If it's a radius, I don't think you have 140 feet to make it, to be honest, just for the inside circle. I mean, that's a lot of space you don't have. It's up against a hard side on the west side of Sullivan. And it's going to be a wall there where people are going to come around that, and if they just lose it just a little bit, like I know it happens, you know, you're not going to have room for safety zones and bicycle zones on either side. They didn't appear to put bicycle zones onto their drawings that they were planning. And what are they going to do with bicycles? Because half of the students are supposed to ride bikes to school. You know, they're supposed to be walking or riding bikes and not driving. There are several things that their plan is kind of, I'm not sure they thought of everything. I know that you're probably expecting some tax increases from SJR 14, but that's not going to be instantaneous. And it might not pass. So it's what's called future, you know? And the problem with future is, it's in the future and you just don't know. I was going to save this for later and I think I will, because I don't have time. Anyway, for now, that's it for now. Thanks.
Thanks, George. Okay, I didn't receive any other comment cards to speak during general public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd wish to submit a general public comment at this time? Remind you, we will have an opportunity in a public hearing for the Wild Creek High School item. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number four. That's approval of the agenda. We don't have any deletions or additions to the agenda, but I did receive a request from staff to change up the order that we're going to be hearing the items on tonight's agenda. What the staff has requested is that we hear all of the general business items first and then we'll go into the public hearing items. So what that means is that we're first going to hear the tentative map for Pioneer Meadows. There'll be the City of Sparks CIP item. Then we'll get into the Wild Creek High School item. There'll be a public comment period at that time. And then last but not least, will be our code amendment for the wireless telecommunications item. So with those changes in disclosure, would any commissioners like to make a motion on the agenda?
Mr. Kevin.
Commissioner Peterson.
With the changes that you have stated, I would like to approve the agenda based on those changes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Peterson has made a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there any questions or comments on the item? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as outlined, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We'll now move on to item number five, which is approval of the meeting minutes. First up is approval of the meeting minutes from our March 5th Planning Commission Study Session. Did any commissioners have any changes or care to make a motion concerning those meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vanderwell.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th Planning Commission Study Session.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chair, a second. Commissioner Brock.
We have a second by Commissioner Brock. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Those meetings.
I abstain.
My apologies, Commissioner Peterson. So the motion carries. For the record, let's note that Commissioner Peterson abstains from that meeting. Next up on the meeting minutes is the meeting minutes of our March 7th Planning Commission meeting. Did any commissioners have any changes or additions or care to make a motion on those meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the March 7th Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanderwell's made a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chair, a second. Commissioner Brock.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Brock. Is there any questions or comments concerning?
Abstain again.
Okay, we have an abstention from Commissioner Peterson. We missed him at our last commission meeting. Glad he's here today. Hearing that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes from March 7th, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Those meeting minutes are approved with the abstention from Commissioner Peterson. Okay, we'll move on to item number six. That is informational items. Do we have any informational items from staff?
Mr. Chair, staff does not have any informational items. This is Armando Ornales.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. We'll now move on to our agenda. The first item we're going to hear today is under general business and that's PCN 19-0003. That's the tentative map for Pioneer Meadows. Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, Jonathan Cummins, planner. PCN 19-0003 is a tentative map request for 161 lot residential, single-family subdivision in the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development on a site of 80.83 acres in size, outlined in cyan on the map. Brief background, the Pioneer Meadows Handbook was adopted by council in 2000. It's been amended four times since then, most recently in March of this year. The proposed subdivision will be designated by the Sparks Comprehensive Plan as LDR, Low Density Residential, which allows for a density of three to less than six dwelling units per acre. Further, the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook allows for a density in the SFR for designation of less than four units per acre. The proposed subdivision will be 3.85 dwelling units per acre with homes ranging in size from 6,622 square feet to 14,243 square feet. Here's a little quick summary of the outline of the subdivision. So with that, staff believes that the Planning Commission can make the required 12 findings for a tentative map. Finding T1 requires conformance with the comprehensive plan. This tentative map meets the required densities of both the comp plan and the handbook, as I said, in addition to meeting policy C4, which requires for pedestrian improvements to be made throughout the city. Goal CF1, that the city services can be provided at acceptable levels. Policy H1, that there's appropriate zoning infrastructure and other facilities for the development of new housing throughout the city. Policy H2, that a variety of housing exists throughout the city. And policy CC8, that that housing incorporate designs that are available to promote diversity in neighborhoods. Finding T2 requires conformance with the master plan of streets and highways throughout the city. Staff finds that proposed tentative map is consistent with the city's street master plan. Finding T3 requires conformance with environmental health laws. The developer will be required to comply with the requirements of those agencies, which up till now we have not heard concern from. Finding T4 addresses the availability of water. Truckee Meadows Water Authority will provide service to the site. Finding T5 addresses the availability of utilities. The applicant has estimated that the site will generate 52,325 gallons of sewage per day. The applicant will verify sewer capacity prior to the recordation of the final map. Finding T6 addresses the availability of schools, police, transportation and parks. The site will be served by Spanish Springs Elementary, Shaw Middle School and Spanish Springs High School. Sparks Police Department will provide service to the site. On the transportation side, the applicant has estimated 1,610 trips per day with 161 peak hour trips into and out of the subdivision per day. There are currently two parks planned for Pioneer Meadows. Finding T7 addresses further impacts on streets. This tentative map will not affect the traffic patterns or trip capacities anticipated for the area. Finding T8 addresses flood, plain, slope and soil. Both geotechnical and hydrological reports will be required prior to the recordation of the final map. Finding T9 addresses any other comments from outside agencies. Staff has only heard from the school district in outlining its plan for school capacities in the area. Finding T10 addresses fire service. The site is outside of the City of Sparks, six-minute response time for fire service and as a result will fall under the mutual aid agreement between Sparks Fire Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. Finding T11 addresses any other impacts. Staff finds that this tentative map is compatible with previously approved tentative maps in Pioneer Meadows. As such, we'll also require review of the landscape plans and establish the responsibilities of the developer or an HOA, LMA or similar in the maintenance of common areas throughout the subdivision. Finding T12 requires public notice. Posting of the agenda for tonight's meeting serves as that notice. And with that, staff is recommending approval and I'll be glad to take questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. At our study session, we received revised conditions of approval. Could you go over those quickly for the record?
Absolutely, absolutely. So prior to study session this week, staff, in feedback from the applicant, agreed to amend a couple of the conditions, 11 and 13. And basically, the language that we're amending is to establish that prior to the establishment of an HOA or LMA, that the developer will remain responsible for the maintenance of common areas throughout the subdivision. And going forward, that we will allow that the LMA or HOA maintain that responsibility going forward.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant's representative here? Do they wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioner Stacy Huggins, for the record, representing the applicant. We are happy with staff's report. We agree with the amended conditions and have to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Stacy. Does the commission have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Would anyone care to take a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Blakow.
I'd like to move for the recommendation of approval to City Council of the PCN 19-0003. Motion to request a 161 lot, single-family subdivision at the location of Rolling Meadows Drive, sorry, Shine Bar Drive and Rolling Meadows Drive.
Is that? There's a recommended, and Commissioner Blakow, if you wouldn't mind, for the other, for the commission's consideration, maybe in your motion, if you could delineate that with the revised conditions of approval.
With the revised, yes, of course.
Give another shot.
I'd like to make a motion to afford a recommendation of approval of PCN 19-0003, along with the addition of the conditions of approval.
All right, fair enough. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakow, a second by Commissioner Peterson. Are there any comments or questions concerning the, considering the motion?
Commissioner Carey, Commissioner Ewens, I do have a question. Stacy, when are you expecting Wingfield Hills Road to be completed, seeming that will be a nice access point through? And I don't know. Seeming that will be a nice access point through, and I don't know, maybe, I, I know you're only half of that road. But I didn't know if maybe you or staff could answer just Wingfield Hills Road kind of completion date. Do we have any estimates?
In, in other meetings, we have heard that, that construction on the connection would be, would begin within the next year. I don't know about completion dates, but that's what we've heard about construction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions concerning the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the item's carried unanimously. Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is General Business Item Number 10. This is the City of Sparks CIP. Welcome back, Brian.
Yep, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for City of Sparks. I'm going to go through the proposed FY '20 capital improvement plan. Basically, the main focus tonight is just going to be on the, for FY '20, you do have the full five-year plan on the agenda. And ultimately, I'm going to have, there's a couple other presenters that'll talk about their, their particular funds in more detail. And then the, the proposed five-year, or I mean, I'm, sorry, the proposed FY '20 CIP is just under $24.5 million. Before I go into it, I am going to just go through the CIP planning process. And ultimately, it is a year-round process. We, we, we all spend a lot of time basically going through a lot of meetings, planning, listening to other divisions and consultants and contractors, that sort of thing, trying to be good stewards of the community and trying to be proactive with the projects that we, that we prioritize on the plan. And ultimately, just want to thank the, the staff members and everybody that, that helps me with this plan. And then going into how the plan supports the Comprehensive Plan. Ultimately, the, the vision of having a livable, sustainable, and healthy community. Making sure that our, our roadway and networks and bike paths and all that, all those items are, are in the best shape that we possibly can and managing those with the funding available. The regional system of parks, we've got some beautiful parks in the area, a beautiful area we live in. And managing the plan to the best of our ability to ensure that, that we continue to maintain those parks and open spaces. And then absolutely ensuring that Victorian Square functions as a vibrant downtown community with living, shopping, restaurants, and commercial. There's a lot of development going on down there, and, and we want to make sure we work with them and, and ensure that we're doing the best we can to, to support those, that development down there and make sure that all the events going on are, are, that we support them to the best of our ability. And then the goal, maintaining our facilities and infrastructure. That's one of the most, one of the main items that we have, that we work on and certain things such as the City Hall and the Tom Wharf, and just making sure we maintain those facilities and make sure they're going to work the best they can for the citizens and, and, and going into the future. And then with that, I'll go right into some of the funds. I'm not going to go through every single fund that's in the plan, but I'll highlight some of the major funds, the funding sources, the amount of funding that we're planning for this coming fiscal year, and then highlighting some of the projects that, that we're planning for FY '20. The first one is the Transportation Projects Fund, Fund 1401. That one is funded through the fuel tax and franchise fees. Total cost of transportation projects is just over $3.7 million. One of the most important planning processes for that, that particular fund is using the pavement condition index and inputting that information into the pavement management program. We have a third-party consultant that goes through and assesses essentially one-third of the, the streets every year. And they, from that, they, they rate the, rate the roads, and, and like I said, that's input into the pavement management program. And ultimately, a zero-to-50 rating is a road that needs to be fully rehabbed or fully reconstructed. 51 to 64 is corrective maintenance, such as crack sealing and patching. And then usually, or primarily before preventative maintenance or corrective maintenance is done prior to preventative maintenance, and ultimately, that has a rating of 65 to 100. And then this chart that, that's shown here, this is ultimately one, I believe you saw last year, that shows the historical value of the PC, average PCI since going back to 2005. And we've shown a steady increase. It's flattened a little bit over the last couple of years, but ultimately, we've gone from a 68 to an 82. And with that, I was going to, Amber Sosa's going to come up here and go into a little bit more detail on this particular item.
Thank you, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. So I'm up here before you really quickly again, just to give you a tiny bit of a different look at our PCI. So you'll see to the left of your screen is that same graph that you've seen traditionally for the last few years, and that's citywide average. The new one that you see to your right is the PCI by area of our city. And I can bring up the map to give you an idea of the boundaries of those areas. When you look at it by area, it tells a tiny bit different of a story. Starting at the bottom of the graph, if you look at the orange and the red, this is areas one and two, and you see that those are staying flat. You see the, the trend line, pretty much what we have there, we're maintaining. We're not going down, but we're not getting any better. Area three is included on here. You see the same trend in area three. The only difference there is that that area is maintained exclusively by the Regional Transportation Commission. So we wanted to include it, but it, it is maintained differently. Areas four and five, that tend to be in North Sparks, Northeast Sparks, tend to, you see a little bit different of a trend. You see that their trends are falling. These are our newer streets. These are the ones that are being constructed now. And that actually is a little bit of a conservative approach because we have brand-new streets out there. We have brand-new streets that are 100 that are being worked into this average. So we thought that gave you a little bit of a different look at where the different areas of our city are, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. If not, I will turn you back over to Brian.
Thank you, Amber. Moving on, I was going to go through basically the, the projects that are planned for both rehab and preventative maintenance. This, continuing on with this map that breaks the, the city up into five different areas. We've got two units planned for Area Two and one unit planned in Area One. The first unit, just right there on the corner of Greenbray Drive and, and North McCarran Boulevard, with an average PCI of 35, is scheduled for fully, for a, for rehab, I'm sorry, rehab project. Unit Two, just to the west of Pyramid Way and southeast of Weddiken Road, with an average PCI of 39, is scheduled for a full rehab. And then the last one, Unit Three, is three different streets within the, just east of Pyramid Way, just north of McCarran Boulevard, and over here on Windsurfer Drive. Windsurfer Drive is basically two-thirds developer-funded, and then one-third City of Sparks-funded. And it, all these streets are, are an average of PCI of 24 and in need of rehab. And then lastly, on the Transportation Fund, the corrective and preventative maintenance projects with the PCI rating of 50 to 100, looking at doing some, or working on some roads west of Vista Boulevard and just to the southwest of Sparks Boulevard. Here's Bearing Boulevard here, and then just for your bearings, here's Alf Sworson and Reed High School, so just to the east there. Moving on to Capital Projects Fund 1404. This year, we've, we've, we were showing them broken into three different areas with Alphas 1404A, 1404B, and 1404C, just to delineate the, the 1404A is a two-and-a-half percent general fund transfer, and that is primarily used for our facilities for remodels and then for different projects like that. And then 1404B and C is for IT hardware and IT software, and that is funded through marijuana business license fees. The next slide, I've just got some of the projects shown here that were, were scheduled for 1404A from the maintenance yard building, exterior painting project to a City Hall IT remo, IT remodel, adding VHF and 800 megahertz radio improvements to the basement at City Hall to ensure that during emergency events, we're able to tab radio communication out of that area. And then dispatch at the Police Department, basically expanding the dispatch area to ensure that they can serve the citizens to the best of their ability with projects just over $2 million for that fund, for that 1404A portion of the fund. 1404B and C, Steve Davidek was going to go through that in a little bit more detail for you.
Hi, for the record, Steve Davidek, IT Manager for the City of Sparks. First off, as I tell the council, we appreciate the support we get from our electeds and also from you. We're trying, our job is to make sure the employees can support the jo, their jobs through technology. Everything from traffic systems to streetlights, everything. We do everything we can to support the electronic world we live in today. So that's what IT is for. So this year, our funding sources, per City Council policy, we get funding from the, I have to read this, marijuana business license fees. And we really appreciate that support because it, this year, we're getting almost a million dollars towards IT projects, and it's a lot. But it, there's so much we need to do to keep the city moving forward technology-wise. We have a plan that we put together on what we're going to replace, and we follow it pretty closely. We talked to all the departments. We work as closely with engineering. And Brian's team, as the Parks Department for sprinkler system, rainbird systems, everything. We're talking to everybody, trying to figure out how we can do this all together. We do have a plan on when we're going to replace everything. It's not just an arbitrary, you need a new PC this year and you get it. We have a plan. If you got it two years ago, you got to wait another two years. That's, we just try to really follow that plan. So that's kind of our plan for that. This year, go ahead. Next, this year, we have a proposed budget of $471,800 for tech refresh, we call it, and that's replacing everything from PCs to adding more. We've got to replace a major system over at the Police Department this year. We're replacing mobile data computers that are in the police and fire vehicles, about a third of them this year. And those are more expensive even than a PC. We're adding additional storage all the time. We're up to about nine petabytes, which is a lot of storage, just at the city. Not all full, but we have that room. Our major systems are, all the software that we run, and this is just some of them. And we run everything from ACELA, which is our building permit system, to Unit Four, which is our financial system. Sewer bills are paid through a company called Springbrook. We track our city employee time on NOVA time. It's all there, and it's all taken part, we're supporting it from the IT department. And we do everything we can to make sure all the departments are supported equally with that. Some of the things we're going to be doing this year, we continue to, every year, we try to help the traffic department, and we replace controllers in the control boxes that control the sprinklers, or the, not the sprinklers, the traffic. Okay, that was bad. We had the control, the traffic signals. We're replacing fiber here and there. We had a problem a couple years ago where the fiber was failing between City Hall and PD. We did not realize, and something we learned, is that fiber has about a 20, 25-year life, and we were running it about 30. So we've learned that we need to have a plan, so we have a plan now in place. So there's all these things going on. We're adding more Wi-Fi, et cetera. So everything we can to keep the employees able to do the job, to support their jobs and the citizens of Sparks. Go ahead. We're going to be putting in a new recreation system this year, starting on it. We're replacing their current system with one that's more modern, but it will be cloud-based. But also, we'll be able to work on everybody's tablets, which the current one won't do. Some of the things we did, we replaced the fiber between City Hall and the court and the fires headquarters this last year. We did the Police Department replacement of fiber between City Hall and PD. And we've done, added fire inspections to ACELA, environmental control to ACELA, and we're in the process of getting code enforcement on the ACELA system, which we're really excited to get going. We'd like to let everybody know that we are a Microsoft Office site. Everybody in the city, all the employees have Microsoft Office licenses. Costs money to do that. This last year, we were able to save $30,000 on our contract over a three-year period, which is a pretty good deal, $30,000 a year. Go ahead. Interesting thing, just to point out, all full-time employees have, pretty much have an assigned license, and that costs us $277 a year to have it. I'd like people to know that, because that's not just email. That's all the office products and the licenses to connect to all our servers and the internet. So it's all part of that, per employee. Any questions from IT? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Steve. Moving right along, Parks Projects Fund 1402, funding source is the franchise fee, basically one-third of the franchise fees. The 1401 was two-thirds of the franchise fees. And then also Golden Eagle rental fees and lease fees. Total projects planned in Fund 1402 is just over $1.6 million. We have the primary portion of the fund, which is, we're planning on doing a Marina All-B abilities playground, replacing that play structure that's there. Something similar to the Pawara Park play structure that's been very successful. And then the Golden Eagle Regional, Regional Park Fund, portion of the fund. The Parks Department's done a fantastic job managing the assets out at Golden Eagle and have a very good plan going forward to make sure that we're keeping up with the synthetic turf and, and replacing the turf as, as needed and using aggressive maintenance to make, ensure that that turf lasts as long as possible. This coming fiscal year, we're planning on replace, we're replacing fields, the infield's of softball fields 10 through 15, which is scheduled to be about $700,000. And then we have an annual turf maintenance contract, as I spoke of, to make sure that we're keeping up on the, the maintenance of those, those fields. The next slide shows an overview map of Golden Eagle. The, the yellow there is basically the, the plan for this coming fiscal year. And then this next slide, we basically color-coded the, the projects going forward all the way out to fiscal year '27, phasing those out so that we can properly manage those fields and make sure they're, they are replaced as they age. And then moving on to the Park District projects. Again, this, this is a, a map delineating which area has Park District One, Two, and Three. Park District One is just west of basically McCarran Boulevard and up through Sparks Boulevard. Park District Two is on the east side of that, and then of course, Park District, Park District Three is up in Northeast Sparks. We're planning on replacing the, the court surface at Burgess Park this coming fiscal year. Poliquitas Park, replacing the play structure, the park right around the corner from City Hall here. And then at Pawara Park, actually adding a dog park to an, an area within that park that, that will, will be really nice for the, the public around that area. And then basically, the playground that has, the existing playground has turf right now, and we've found that, that tiles will last a little bit longer, and they will, they're easier to maintain. And our maintenance guys can go and replace them rather than having somebody else come in and replace it. So we're going to replace the, the turf with tiles. And then out in Park District Three, Black, a new park called Black Hills Park is going to be constructed. And then Vict, Victorian Square Room Tax Fund 1415. We've got the sections that we've, we've shown you in the past that, that we're working on, going from basically east to west. And we had scheduled Section Two to be completed this year, but ultimately, the, with the Nugget Events Center going in, we decided to, to take a look at a different area in the area with, right north of the main Nugget Building there. There were some deteriorating planters that we felt would, would, needed to be replaced. So we, we're currently working on that. That's under construction. So now, this next fiscal year, we're going to look at going back to Section Two since the, the Nugget Events Center should be complete by then. And then this is just showing Section One, some of the things we, we worked on from the, the tree planters to the pavers and, and concrete, different things that, that were reconstructed in that area. And then the Community Development Block Grant, which is the low to moderate income areas that are determined through the, the census that occurs every 10 years. Ultimately, this, this, this left map shows the, the five-year plan that, that we've, that we're working on. We've already completed this area just north of Prater Way. This next fiscal year, we're going to be, start working on an area just south of Prater Way and between 15th Street and Rock Boulevard. And that is basically reconstructing some of the deteriorating sidewalks, curb, and gutter. And then utility projects, we call the funds 1600s because there's multiple pieces to it, which is sewers, storm drain, flood, and effluent. And ultimately, we've got just, just over, or just under $10.2 million with the projects planned. A big portion of it is the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which is just over $2.7 million. over $2.7 million, and that is the City of Sparks share, which is essentially one, about one-third of the cost, with City of Reno paying the other two-thirds. A sanitary sewer upgrade project at Tyler and 18th Street. And then, storm drain over on Wingfield Hills, doing some storm drain improvements in that area. On Rockwood Drive, and also on Glen Meadow Drive, doing some, also doing some storm drain improvements, along with our annual curb gutter and sidewalk projects that we actually also have a, essentially, a five-year plan that we work on. These gray streets here are essentially streets that have been completed in the last few years. This next map blows up the five areas that we're looking at for the next five years, and ultimately FY '20 is the purple streets here, along G Street and Shriver Boulevard and up here on a little portion of J Street. And that, again, is also the curb gutter and sidewalk that's deteriorating in those And then the Motor Vehicle Fund, Fund 1702, this is an important fund for ensuring that we're replacing the vehicles and equipment and all the tools that we need to, for the maintenance and the different divisions to do their job appropriately. The vehicle equipment replacement plan is just over $1.8 million, replacing six vehicles for police, one light vehicle for fire, 18 vehicles for community services, which do include one sweeper and one drains pipe cleaning truck. And then, of course, the fire apparatus replacement plan of about $714,000, which will provide the final payment for a new ladder truck. The first payment was completed last year, and hopefully, we'll have that truck in hand within a year or so. And then also, one off-road fire apparatus vehicle, with the total cost of that fund of just over $2.5 million. And then with that, I'll take any questions you guys might have, you all might have.
Thank you, Brian. Does the commission have any questions for Brian, Amber, or Steve?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Feunz, Brian, thanks for the presentation. Is there anybody that goes out proactively and asks for donations, you know, for example, like the All Abilities Park at the Marina? Does anybody from the city ever go out and proactively, maybe seek donations from either service clubs or corporations?
You know, it depends on the specific fund. A lot of times, Parks does get donations for specific things, and specifically, the Marina, for that park, we are getting sizable donation. But I'm not sure if we actually actively, proactively go out and request donations. A lot of times, it's just citizens or groups that come to us and provide donations through that avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Feunz. Are there any other questions from the commission on our CIP?
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to Mr. Kason's answer, thank you. Allison McCormick, for the record, I don't know about that specific project, but the Parks and Recreation Department routinely applies for grants from various agencies, from the federal government all the way down to private, non-governmental organizations.
Thank you for that. Okay, would any of the commissioners care to make a motion on this? I believe the city council's looking for a recommendation from us.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. VanderWaal.
I'm going to find the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2020 to 2024 in conformance with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to forward the recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner VanderWaal. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I second.
Commissioner Brock has made a second. Are there any questions or comments from the commission concerning the motion or the CIP? I had a couple. I first, you know, I think this is a really good exercise. I appreciate, I appreciate you coming back to, you know, as keepers of the comprehensive plan, I think we can provide a lot of good input on it. I wanted to extend an appreciation to you and Amber for taking a good look at my comment I made last year about the sidewalk improvements. I was very happy to see that the funding has doubled this year, and I think it's a continuing process, but I think that's a great step, and it'll really help promote Goal C3 and Policy C4 of our plan. Wanted to thank you for including Richard's place. I remember last year when we saw the, that mini-storage CUP, the condition of that roadway was really unacceptable, so I appreciate that. And I was also very pleased to see the $550,000 going into the CIP towards the All Abilities Playground at the Marina. I remember about 12 years ago, when I was served on the Parks and Recreation Commission, there was discussion of that, and it's great to see that project finally coming through. One request and idea to maybe take a look at for future CIP, I saw that the Weddington Park paving project was slated to go in fiscal year '24. I would encourage you to maybe take a look, if we can maybe accelerate that project. I think Weddington Park, it's a great area, a lot of great hiking opportunities and great viewpoints. If that could be in any way accelerated, I think it could help get that park a little bit more exposure and usage from the public.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that. One thing that's been difficult on that one is the drainage. It's gonna be pretty costly to bring, for the storm drainage in that area, so that's kind of why it got pushed out a little bit.
Okay.
The cost was going a little bit higher than we anticipated, so.
Thank you. Did any other commissioners have any comments or questions before the vote? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Amber. Thanks, Steve. Good luck in city council. Okay. We'll move into our next agenda item, which is PCN 19007. Before we get started, I wanted to kind of clarify the process for how the public hearing's gonna be conducted, and lay out a couple of ground rules before we get started. I know there's a lot of interest in this project, there's a lot of different opinions. I wanted to say that all opinions during the public comment period will be respected. You know, this isn't Lawler, Vince Center, or Mackey Stadium, so please, no boos or cheers. How it'll work, I'm gonna call up the names first of those who've submitted a public comment period, a public comment card. Then I'm gonna call up, you know, those who want to speak second. Everyone's gonna be asked, who speaks, can be asked to fill out a public comment card. When you, when you're speaking, state your name and address for the record. I wanted to put in another reminder, our meeting minutes are verbatim, so all the words that you're saying are word-for-word, will be transcribed into our meeting minutes. So if somebody has already said a point that you've already said, you know, it's perfectly fine, you don't have to, you could say, you know, "I agree with what's been said," but word-for-word, your, will be said. And everyone's gonna have three minutes to speak. So before we get into that, I'll, thank you for that, I'll turn it over to staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Rundell, Planning Manager for the City of Sparks, here to present on item PCN 19007. Mr. Chair, I have prepared one presentation. You, the Planning Commission, has received one staff report, and there are three items that we are discussing here today. A development agreement between Washoe County School District and the City of Sparks for the construction and development of a high school. A conditional use permit for the construction of a transmission line or a power line. A conditional use permit for the construction on a hillside in accordance with the Sparks Municipal Code. My presentation, I'm going to identify how the development agreement works and why it is being utilized. I'm gonna try to identify the potential concerns with development in this area, including transportation, sewer, flood control, public safety, the flight path, and how the development agreement will address those concerns. This public hearing is regarding the development of a portion of the Wild Creek Golf Course as a public high school by Washoe County School District. Exhibit 1 is on the overhead monitors, and it identifies the area that we are discussing today is outlined in the blue line. It is at the northeast corner of Sullivan, El Rancho, and McCarran. Wild Creek Golf Course has existed at the site since the 1970s and has been operated by the Reno-Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, more commonly known as the RSCVA. In 2009, the Washoe County School District identified a future need for a high school in this general area through their 2009 School Facilities Plan. Furthermore, the Washoe County School District identified as part of their 2016 capital funding initiative that there was a need for a high school in this proximity. Preliminary site assessment identified the Wild Creek Golf Course would be a suitable site for the education and operational needs of the Washoe County School District in regard to a high school. In May of 2017, a joint meeting that included the elected bodies of the City of Sparks, Washoe County, the City of Reno, the RSCVA, and the Washoe County School District, all signed a letter of intent identifying that a new public high school and Wild Creek Golf Course was an appropriate place and was in the best interest of the citizens of Washoe County. In February of 2019, earlier this year, the RSCVA Board of Directors unanimously approved the transfer of the interest in the Wild Creek Golf Course to Washoe County. We are here today to discuss the site plan, the architecture, and possible impacts from a proposed public high school. To construct in this location, while, the Wild Creek Golf area, a regional plan amendment was required. And Exhibit 18B, which you should have received, that's the last one, identifies that the location on, in red on the map, is the existing location of a transmission line. And the Planning Commission may remember, forward a recommendation to the Sparks City Council to sponsor a regional plan amendment approximately of July of 2018, to add an additional corridor for the construction of that transmission line. The Regional Planning Governing Board recently reviewed this request and adopted the additional corridor at its February 2019 meeting. The RPG required that, with the construction of this transmission line, it would have to, or the, excuse me, that the construction of the transmission line would have to occur within two years of the adoption of that regional plan amendment. So that essentially would be in February of 2021. In 2013, the state legislature required all planning jurisdictions within Washoe County, which would be the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and unincorporated Washoe County, to review public schools with the same process. In the City of Sparks, that's the administrative review process. To construct on this site requires a conditional use permit for the development on a site with slopes of 20% or greater over 10% of the site. Also, as I just discussed, the construction of a transmission line on this site also requires a conditional use permit. Both of those are public hearings. Given the size, the scope, and the significance of this project, and the general interest from the public, from the Sparks Planning Commission, and from the city council, staff proposed utilizing the development agreement process, and Washoe County School District was amenable to that. This development agreement process allows staff to get the entire project picture in front of the Planning Commission. However, the Planning Commission is accustomed to having final authority on a conditional use permit because of the utilization of the development agreement. And because of the ability to get all of the details in front of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission would be recommending body, in this case, to the Sparks City Council. In the development agreement, it identifies that the Washoe County School District has waived their right for the Planning Commission to have this final authority on the associated conditional use permits. It is anticipated that this item would go in front of the Sparks City Council as a public hearing on May 28. The ordinance, as this development agreement will be, if approved, would be recorded on the property, and that's why there's an attached legal description in your staff report. That ordinance, as I said, would be, would be recorded, and the school district would again have to be, have to comply with all of the conditions that are in that development agreement. Without the development agreement, the Planning Commission may very well be today just reviewing a grading permit for hillside development and simply a map, as we have here, identifying the location of a proposed transmission line. This development agreement, again, is for the construction of a high school, and to get this in front of the public bodies and the public for complete transparency. The development agreement identifies that the site could be used for the construction of a, or for a public high school, and limits the population of that high school to 2,275 Staff did an entire infrastructure analysis on the proposal, and also identified that this would not prohibit the areas outside the blue line that was on the site plan to be utilized as a golf course. Sparks Municipal Code identifies how staff and the Planning Commission should look at architecture in regard to design standards. However, the public facility zoning district does not have specific design standards, and therefore, staff reviewed the design of the high school in regard to non-commercial development. In reviewing the public facility zoning district, you'll identify that Section 20.02010 identifies a height restriction to 30 feet in the public facility zoning district. However, this same section provides an exemption for the construction of a school and does not limit the height of a school in the public facility zoning district. Parking was a concern for staff as we reviewed the proposal to the parking ordinance for the City of Sparks. Sparks Municipal Code requires that one point for every one and a half students, faculty, and staff, there shall be one parking space. Applying the Sparks Municipal Code standard to 2,275 people requires 1,517 parking spaces. Washoe County School District requested a minor deviation from the requirement to comply with this municipal code standard. This request for a minor deviation is a permitted request through the Sparks Municipal Code and is done administratively. Staff does support the request for a 10% reduction, which would be a total of 1,366 parking spaces. Staff required the applicant to submit a parking analysis, which is Exhibit 3 in your staff report, and there's further analysis on Page 8 of your staff report. We require the local high schools of DeMonte, Spanish Springs High School, the North Valleys High School, Galena, and McQueen all be analyzed for how many people were parking there during typical school hours, and then how many people were parking in the facility during special events such as an open house or a football game. That analysis on Page 8 demonstrates that the 10% reduction in the parking requirement is appropriate, and it would still exceed most of the parking, parking spaces allocated at typical high schools in our area. Exhibit 5. Exhibit 5, that has now been put on the overhead, reflects a landscape plan, proposed landscape plan for the Wild Creek High School, or for the high school at Wild Creek. The requirement for landscaping in the public facility zoning district is that 20% of the site shall be landscaped. Exhibit 5, as you're looking at, demonstrates that 44 and a half acres will be landscaped at the site, which exceeds the requirement for landscaping in the municipal code by 32.2 acres. I want to point out that the football field, or soccer field, and the baseball fields and softball fields, thank you, Ian, will all utilize natural grass, natural turf. So you have a similar amount of landscaping, while not blade of grass for blade of grass that exists with the golf course. The green spaces will still be out there at the, at the facility. Sparks Municipal Code requires a ratio of one tree for 10 parking spaces, and additionally requires one tree for every 500 square feet of landscaped area. That would total, for this site, 1,073 trees to be required. Ian just quickly counted and told me there's 945 trees up there, which does not comply with the municipal code standard. We identified this to the Planning Commission at the study session on Tuesday. While this development agreement conditions numerous impacts that the school would have on the site, it does not get the school district out of the requirement of going through the administrative review process that was dictated by the legislation from a few legislative sessions ago that I identified earlier in my presentation. That administrative review would still be required, and what staff would be checking in the case that this is ultimately approved... That administrative review would still be required, and what staff would be checking in the case that this is ultimately approved would be conformance with the development agreement as well as complete conformance with the municipal code standards. And as well as any direction that is included in this development agreement from the planning commission or ultimately the city council. Sparks staff, as well as the applicants, submitted a sewer analysis that was attached in Exhibit 6 of your staff report. As Brian Kason, our utility manager, identified in the CIP presentation the planning commission just heard, there are required upgrades to Tyler Way and 18th Street to accommodate a high school of this size at Wild Creek Golf Course. The CIP has already included those upgrades, and they would be completed by, they are anticipated to be completed by June 30th of 2020. If they were not to be completed by the city of Sparks, the Washoe County would not be able to open the facility at Wild Creek because we would not be able to accommodate the anticipated sewer demand of the project. Staff also analyzed the transportation impacts and identified mitigation techniques for the construction of the high school. This mitigation this mitigation plan included coordination with Washoe County School District, the city of Sparks staff, the Regional Transportation Commission staff, as well as the Nevada Department of Transportation staff. We had numerous meetings until ultimately we identified what were appropriate mitigation measures, and those are all included in the staff report as well, excuse me, and those are all included in the development agreement and outlined very specifically. Exhibit 8, as Ian has just brought up, identifies where we believe the mitigation, or we believe that increased transportation demands will warrant mitigation techniques. It is anticipated that the school will generate 4,314 daily trips to the area. That would be 1,105 AM peak hour trips. This map here illustrates what we're going to go into a finer detail exhibit, but starting at the south and working north, A, B, C, D, and E are the maps that we're going to go through now. We'll go to Map A. Thank you, Ian. This identifies that McCarran and Sullivan would be required to do upgrades to the to accommodate additional cars. It is, this is the McCarran and Sullivan intersection, and I, this area here includes a turn pocket of 600 feet and 170-foot deceleration lane, as well as 180 feet of taper for queue storage. Reason that I wanted to identify those very specific standards is we didn't just simply require, nor did their traffic consultant submit an analysis that showed lines on a map. Very specific infrastructure upgrades that include detailed numbers such as 170 feet for deceleration and 180 feet of taper. That's the level of analysis that we went to as we reviewed this project, and those are the mitigation techniques we're proposing the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval on. We'll go to the next slide. Exhibit B identifies the southern entrance into the high school. This would be a roundabout, and also, as I'll speak to in just a few moments, identifies the location of the beginning of the inverted siphon for the ore ditch, but I will speak to that in just a few moments. Go to the next one, Ian. Yeah, thank you. This exhibit demonstrates the upgrades to the intersection of Sullivan and El Rancho, as well as the main entrance into the high school. Both of those would be roundabouts and would include additional sidewalks in areas where there is not currently sidewalk. We were concerned about safe transportation to school, and with transportation, we didn't limit that to the movement of buses or cars. We identified sidewalk improvements and bicycle improvements as well. Go to the next one, Ian. This is an intersection of Sun Valley Boulevard, or where it turns from Clearacre Lane into Sun Valley Boulevard and Sullivan Lane. Excuse me, I believe it's El Rancho at that location. And El Rancho, the upgrades here, you can see, go all the way to the north part of Sun Valley Boulevard and identify a proposed merge lane that we have required through the development agreement. Go to Exhibit 10, Ian. This exhibit was shared with the planning commission at the study session on Tuesday. The traffic report that has been included has an attachment in your staff report identifies that 50% of the traffic will come from the north, and by traffic, I don't necessarily mean cars. It could be buses, or it could be pedestrians, but 50% of the population of the school is anticipated to come from the north, Sun Valley. Those students are typically going to Spanish Springs High School at this time. 45% of the traffic will come from the west, or mostly from the HUG High School area. And it is anticipated that 5% of the traffic will come from the east or from the city of Sparks. And that traffic is more so associated with people that may be working at the site or providing services to the site, such as a delivery or something to that effect, unless so being students generated from that area. Exhibit 11. Exhibit 11 is included in your staff report. Exhibit 11 identifies the pedestrian improvements that staff has proposed be included at this site. Washoe County School District would be responsible for paying for all of these infrastructure upgrades. These infrastructure upgrades include school zone flashers, traffic signal timing adjustments, and providing certain studies to the city of Sparks so that we can ensure that the traffic signaling is, has been set appropriately through the programming of those traffic signals, or as Mr. David Eck referred to as sprinklers. We also identified that there is, or we also require mitigation measures and reports to be submitted regarding flood control. Exhibit 18B identifies a inverted siphon that is proposed to be included at the site. Thank you, Ian. The inverted siphon would accommodate for the for the flows that we anticipate to be accommodated by the ore ditch. The ore ditch currently goes, I'm going to use the mouse. Ore ditch comes from south to north to this location, goes north through the site, and then meanders back down to this point here. Again, as we identified earlier, by the movement of the transmission line and by putting the ore ditch in the box culvert of, or the inverted siphon allows for the school to be moved to the current site as opposed to further south on the golf course site. In the staff report and in the development agreement, the planning commission reviewed that the city of Sparks is requiring the school district to provide an EAP. An EAP is an emergency action plan, and that is in response to the Sun Valley Dam that is also just north of the site. This EAP or emergency action plan would require the school district to provide, or review by the city engineer, a response for foreseeable emergencies, address downstream hazard conditions affected or that would be impacted by the development of a school. And this EAP must include a detention, not detention. This EAP must include decision-making, notification processes, communication processes, planned action, and post-event action, all for in regard to events with the Sun Valley diversion dam. Public safety is the next item that we'll discuss. The public safety component is typical secondary emergency access roads that the planning commission is accustomed to in regard when they review a tentative map. As I discussed on Tuesday, the, a fire hydrant location map will be reviewed at the time of the administrative review, but we did not believe it was that important to review at this time. Question that came up from Commissioner Vanderwell, I believe, on the, at the study session on Tuesday was in regard to a police service at the site. It is anticipated that the new high school be, will be patrolled by Washoe County School District Police, similar to the patrol that occurs at Reed High School and Spanish Springs High School. That would be one full-time officer that is patrolling the site, and one full-time officer that is in a, in a car and patrolling the roads in proximity to the site. It is likely that the existing personnel in regard to public safety or police would be transferred from HUG High School to begin the process. This site is in proximity to the flight path for the Reno-Tahoe International Airport. Significant amount of coordination was done with the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority and the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration. We looked at the noise contours as that, that are in proximity to this site and found that this site is outside of the noise contours for 65 decibels. The 65 decibel contour would typically require additional mitigation techniques be applied, including insulation and noise attenuation for the disturbance you'd have from a typical aircraft departing the site. But because this area is outside of those noise contours, it is not necessary to require those mitigation techniques. Typical, typical building code energy conservation techniques are at a point now that most of those sound insulation occurs through normal construction methods. Second concern regarding the flight path was the location of the proposed transmission line. Staff shared with the planning commission a cross-section of those transmission line proposed locations, and initially, it was identified one of those may be five feet too high, though that was lowered, and that was demonstrated in the cross-section at the 65-foot height, and also we identified the elevation above mean sea level that was appropriate for the airport authority and the and the flight paths. Exhibit 13, that was included in your staff report, is a, is not only a citizen concern, but was also a concern to the airport authority in regard to lighting of the facility. The football field will include the lights that are demonstrated in this photo. The city staff is proposing we require the downlighting techniques utilized on the top photo as opposed to more typical or older stadium lighting that you see in the bottom picture. Go to the next one. This illustration depicts how those lights will cast light out onto the field. And this depiction identifies the amount of light that is anticipated to spill outside of the anticipated light casting onto the field, and those numbers are all at zero, with the highest one being just a 0.001. Next slide, Ian. The next slide reflects, the red reflects the highest intensity of the light at night from the stadium lighting, and the orange, yellow, and then subsequently green identify where the light will begin to not affect typical lighting conditions for the night sky, and the black identifies there'll be no impact from those lights. Now, that doesn't mean that you won't be able to see them from a different location, but it means that it will not be illuminating anything on the, on the ground. This is demonstrated similar to Golden Eagle Park has these types of lights. Now, you can see them from Pyramid Highway, but they are not necessarily illuminating anything beyond where they are projected. It was asked at the study session on Tuesday, what is the highest light standard? The highest light standard is 70 feet. Additionally, it was asked at the study session on Tuesday whether or not the baseball fields or softball fields would have lighting. At this time, it will not have lighting, and it's not anticipated they will anytime soon. So the only facility that would have stadium lighting currently is the football field or soccer field. Requirement for the development agreement is that it conforms with the comprehensive plan. As Mr. Kason identified in the CIP to begin the presentation, it was how this is supporting the comprehensive plan. As Chairman Carey identified at the beginning of that presentation, that he appreciated that the planning commission, that was their bailiwick, the control, or having jurisdiction in the comprehensive plan. Staff has outlined in the staff report how the proposals, how the proposed development agreement complies with the comprehensive plan. Again, this is a three, this, this public hearing includes three different items, the development agreement, which you have a motion for, the conditional use permit for the construction of a transmission line, and a conditional use permit for the development on a hillside. Exhibit 15 shows the current topography for the site, excuse me, the topography for the site. You can see the ore ditch alignment in that, and it is out, and it has the steepest contours. And then what I want to, can we zoom in on the table here, Ian? Thank you. Going to zoom in on the table here that is included with this depiction. The Sparks Municipal Code has development standards in regard to hillside development. It restricts the amount of development that you can do in the different slope categories. Zero to 15 slope category allows for 100% of the site to be developed within that slope category or disturbed. 15 to 25 allows for 75%, 25 to 30 allows for 33%, and 30-plus, that does not, that restricts all development. Now, there is a caveat in the municipal code that was explained in the staff report that allows development in the category that exceeds the 30-plus, as long as you replace, at a two-to-one replacement, the amount of disturbed area within a slope category that you can provide for. The slope category of 30-plus has a proposed disturbed area of .4 acres. At a two-to-one replacement, that would be .8 acres. That .8 acres can be accommodated in the first slope category, as the total area is 54.9, but it allows for 69.6. So the development agreement does require that they will set aside .8 acres within that area for undisturbed land, which the school district can accommodate. Staff has reviewed this project and provided proposed mitigation measures for the planning commission to consider through the development agreement process. We have reviewed those mitigation proposals for sewer in regard to sewer impacts, transportation impacts, flood impacts, public safety, the flight path, and how the, how the development agreement will address those. Staff is here to answer any questions. Washoe County School District is also, has representatives here, as well as their development team, and representatives from NV Energy are also here. Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jim. At this time, I'd like to bring up the school district, or their representatives, to make a brief presentation if you'd like to.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Adam Cersey. I'm the Facilities Manager for the Washoe County School District. Appreciate the time. Just want to add a little bit about the process that we've gone through thus far. Don't have a lot of technical details to add. We have gone through a series of public meetings and conversations with the public, interactions with our design team that have led to what we feel is a best fit for this entire school project on this piece of property, considering carefully the needs of the campus and the students and faculty that will occupy it, as well as considering the needs of the existing property, golf course, the open space, et cetera, and of course, considering the needs of the existing residents in the community and those residents who passed through that neighborhood. residents who pass through that neighborhood on a regular basis. It's been a healthy process that we're grateful to the City of Sparks staff and of course, this commission this evening for entertaining this development agreement format that has really allowed us to take this process to the next level of detail and express our commitment in very explicit, explicit terms on all of the elements that Jim mentioned and described in detail. We feel that's appropriate for this project and we're glad to be here and making this commitment or proposing to make these commitments in this level of detail here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Commissioners, this is kind of a unique item in that we have three action items we're going to be delivering and voting on tonight. We have the development agreement. We have conditional use permit 003, which is for hillside development. Then we have conditional use permit for the 004 for the relocation of the power line. What I'd like to do is we're going to have three different public hearings, one on the development agreement and then we'll close that, we'll bring it back to the commission for, for a vote. Then we'll have one for each, we'll have a public hearing for each of the other two conditional use permits. I think before we get into that, I wanted to provide the commission with an opportunity to ask staff or Washoe County any kind of technical questions regarding the process. I'll provide an opportunity with each of the items to ask any, any questions related to that item, but does the commission have any technical questions about the, the process regarding any of the three items on tonight's agenda? Commissioner Vanderwell?
Yeah. Commissioner Carey, Jim, if you can come up. I just, I would like you to put on the record for this meeting, if you can, what we discussed in the study session, that the school district can't deviate any, anything away from the development agreement without coming back through public process. So, if you can just explain that.
Thank you through the chair, Mr. Carey, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Vanderwell. The development agreement is a binding agreement that the school district would be signing. I believe you, in your staff report, you can see the locations of where certain signatures are required. In the case that development agreement were to be recommended for approval by the planning commission and the city council adopted that recommendation, the development agreement would be recorded on the property. If you did a title search, it should reflect the development agreement on that property. That would be a binding document, similar to a planned development handbook that the planning commission is familiar with. All of the standards and such would be required or that the planning commission approved or city council approved would be binding for the school district to make those improvements. If they identified that one of those improvements did not work and they wanted to change one of those requirements, the, the staff, Sparks staff would require an amendment to the development agreement. We would go through the process again for amendment to that development agreement. And that would go through planning commission and Sparks City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell. Are there any other technical questions about the process? Okay, seeing none. At this time, because this is such a high interest item, I would like to open up a special public hearing for the development agreement associated with PCN 19007. So, at this time, any of the folks who would like to speak on the record concerning the development agreement, open up the public hearing at this time. I did have a couple requests. George and Kim, you had requested to speak about this item as well. Would you like to, either one of you like to submit additional public comment? You can come up too, Kim. We, we got two chairs. Thank you both.
George Lee, 3506 Brassie Drive, Sparks. It's my interest, our interest, that the school be held to some sort of, and it might as well be, might as well be this agreement, where there are certain things we'd like to see. I know you've put into the, or they've put into the plan, downlighting and to try and watch that, but they haven't mentioned anything about sound. At least it wasn't covered. We'd like to see an abolition or a, or moratorium on, on sound from games or practices or band. 10 o'clock, something like that. I don't know how late the games run, but I mean, the point is that we need to get something down that's going to keep them from just, you know, well, we've got to get this done tomorrow. We didn't get it done because of whatever reason, you know? And put it in writing to where the school is required to comply with it. We'd also like to see something about the, the school department has mentioned several times that this is going to be a closed campus and which means students aren't just wandering on, on and off campus between classes and whatever. We'd like to see that codified so that they are, the students stay on campus during the day because that'll take a load off of the, the, you know, enforcement piece of people. It'll take a load off of traffic. It will, it'll just be better for everybody. The third thing that I had was the area that the school says that they're going to cover as far as enforcement with the school patrol, whatever, is kind of, well, we're going to do the area, the roads around it, but what does that mean? Does that mean that the, it's fair game for anybody to go off campus and go up and, and go and run amok up in the area above? What's it called? Well, it's above El Rancho or something like that, or somewhere in the, the Wild Creek Golf Villas, which is private streets. Will they be going in there? Will they be doing, you know? And plus, the new facility that's going in up on El Rancho, the condominiums that are going up there in the, I don't remember what it's called, but there's a new 100 units going in up there. I believe it's 100. Falcon Ridge, Falcon Ridge, yeah. We'd like to see something, some protections for those people. And if that, those protections aren't there from the school district patrols, then that means the cost of your policing is going to go up. I know you guys aren't particularly interested in cost because you're more interested in having, you know, things work, you know, together. But the costs are going to be a big, it's going to hit Sparks. And that's one of my big interests. Thank you very much, George. Kim?
Kimberly Tracy. I'm just going to run down the list here. One, one, first of all, I'd like to see in writing a definite plan to conserve the golf course green space in writing, something that says that, that will definitely be maintained, a green space at the very minimum in writing before anything is finalized. A best fit for us would be to decrease the footprint to the original 60 to 70 acres that Mr. Etchard assured us it would not exceed when he came to speak to us personally. That could probably be easily done by, by building a parking structure, as I mentioned, instead of a parking lot, which in turn would further mitigate the flooding problem by decreasing the, the amount of asphalt on the ground. And possibly, they could put in or conserve one of the lakes that is important to the wildlife in that area because I don't think you have any, any appreciation of how much wildlife is supported on that golf course with the, with the lakes and the green space. I'd like something in writing that they're going to conserve as much as possible, all the wildlife in that area, including the nesting birds of prey, which already have nests in existence. They are very important to our rodent control in that area and we appreciate their existence there. As far as the timing of the traffic lights, if the timing isn't extended as far to the freeway out that direction and as far back as Rock and Fort, it's a moot point. Because if you time the ones in the middle and you don't do anything with the two on the end, it's, it's pointless. So, there's that added expense, so please keep that in mind. It's not an isolated incidence with two or three lights in the middle. The CUOO does not want this school to be considered a PRS, but states in your comprehensive plan goals that a high school at this proposed location would place a major new public facility in an area. So, in my eyes, a major new public facility is in fact a PRS. I think they are synonymous one with the other and I think that we should definitely consider it a PRS regardless. In the goal of the MG4, where he mentions the financial struggles and how this is going to alleviate that, that problem has already been alleviated by taking the RSCVA out of the management position of the golf course and putting Duncan Golf in charge of managing the golf course. It is now a profit-bearing institution. As far as MG11, sensitive, being sensitive to the character of the existing area, if they were being sensitive to the character of the existing area, there would have been some money and effort into exploring other areas that in fact were available for building the school in the first place. So, the overall cost for those of you who were not at the several meetings or at least two meetings in which Mr. Etchard stated it's going to cost what it will cost, period, when we asked him if there was any top amount that was going to be too much. And I'd just like to point out that this is irreversible, so please take every bit of time that you need to, to make sure everything is correct. Like for instance, if Whittaker is proven to be impacted by the traffic, is there a plan in place to mitigate that in the event that that happens? Because they are mitigating the sound. While soundproofing is not required, per Mr. Etchart, they are in fact soundproofing that building, so that's an additional cost. There's the flooding that has to be mitigated, the traffic that has to be mitigated, and the sewer that has to be mitigated, all at our cost.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Were there any other members of the public who'd like to speak about the development agreement at, at this time? Understood.
My name is Gail Miller. I live at 5,200 Malap Highway, Sparks, Nevada, 89431. And I've lived in either the City of Sparks, which was for 25 years, and now I live a stone's throw outside of it in the sphere of influence. I love Sparks. I love everything about it. My kids grew up here. They went to Sparks High, best place I've ever lived. So, I hate to see the golf course code, but I want to focus on your, I guess your task is to be able to make recommendations or additions perhaps to this agreement. And I agree with George, I'm concerned not only with the lighting, which if they do get lighting to the stadium, to the football, the baseball fields below, I would hope that it would be the kind of lighting that we wouldn't see because I will see it from where I'm at, from my bedroom upstairs. And I hear already the golf course noise from the loudspeakers. I can even hear Sparks High two miles away on Friday night games. So, I know I'm going to hear the football games. I know I'm going to hear baseball games and I would like to have some mitigation as to hours. And even if they're going to have band practice, maybe 7:00, 7:30 during weekdays in the morning, maybe no bands after 10:00 at night on weekdays, later midnight on game nights on Friday, Saturday night would be great if we could get something in this agreement about that. I'm also concerned about the fire road that the fire marshal wants to approve because I, when I look at these pictures and these maps, I'm not sure where that fire road's going. So, I would like that, hopefully that will be confirmed by the time this agreement is confirmed and signed. I'm a little bit curious about the number of students going there because originally we were told more like 2,600 students and then faculty and staff. It seems to be down a little bit and I'm just, I'm kind of curious as to why, but that, I'm just throwing that out there. I, I said the other day at the study meeting when I spoke that I was concerned about traffic from the east being more than 5% just because I do know a lot of people that live in the upper part of Sun Valley and that's going to go to this school. And I see them drive over to Pyramid Highway down and then down McCarran to avoid the jamming up in the middle of Sun Valley. So, I hope that is looked at. I hope it doesn't affect us too much, but I think on Whittaker and McCarran, it's going to be a little bit more than 5%. I hope that, you know, maybe we can talk with either the school district or with you guys and the council and get some of these things added to make the agreement a little bit more palatable for the residents who live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, and thanks for coming to provide another public comment for us. Kathleen, go ahead.
Kathleen Shupp. I live at 4975 Malap Highway in Sparks. I wanted to talk about the original student population was estimated at approximately 2,600, 2,500 or 2,600 students. And now it's down to 21, 25. I, I, is my opinion that those numbers were reduced in order to make everything fit into whatever structures you have with the, the road usage and, you know, traffic and parking. Your numbers that you have are the, the ones that are being proposed here, 21, 25 students, they're not going to hold for long. We are going through a growth and it's projected to grow even stronger as time goes on with the, the growth rate out at USA Parkway. But as a result of, of all this growth, the demands on the roads and the parking structures are, are going to be greatly increased. I would also like to see a parking structure such as Kim has mentioned, but if there's no parking structure, could you look into maybe water permeable asphalt for the parking lots so that the water won't just run off and, and be wasted? And I have a huge question. There's a, why are all these students from Reno coming to Sparks to make demands on our emergency systems? I think that they should be held in Reno. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Kathleen. Got a couple more comment cards received. Darla Lee and John Hesse. You both want to come, come to the podium. We got two chairs you could fill up, like provide public comment. Darla Lee and John Hesse.
When you turn the gong down, you're scared of daylight. What do you think, Jamie? Can you?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, you didn't. Okay. John, go ahead.
Okay. John Hesse, 3035 Malapay, Sparks, Nevada, 89431. The, the Wild Creek group, boy. Anyway, thank you very much for, for listening to us. I know you've got, got some big jobs, big decisions in front of you. The speakers that were before me, I agree with 150% of what they're saying. The Washoe County School District, and the reason that I agree with is the Washoe County School District has not been transparent. They say they have been, but they haven't been transparent. So, we got off on the wrong foot. WC1 High School in the Wild Creek area. Wow. Gee, that's kind of neat. I see Wild Creek because I live next to the golf course. I wonder what part of the area they mean? Probably Sun Valley, maybe out on the Pyramid Highway? No, they didn't mean that. So, then in 2017, they come out with this very nice artist conception that I don't know who, well, I guess we paid for it. And it was down there on the front nine. And I thought, you know, that's, I mean, it's a two-lane road and 2,500. Anyway, I'm, I'm glad that hopefully it's going to be going on the back nine. My concern now is the front nine and the executive course. Washoe County, what are they going to do with that? Now that Duncan is taking it over, private concern, I think they're doing pretty well with it. And there's a, what is it called? First tee for the kids? They have shown an interest that they would like to use the building that Wild Creek provides as a clubhouse for possibly, you know, where they can teach these kids, keep the cart barn. We'll lose the back nine, so we're going to need less water on the front nine. But maybe if we can keep the whole front nine plus the nine-hole executive course, I, I think that it would be more palatable, at least for the folks like myself that live around there. They would still see the wildlife. This inverted siphon is going to go more to the north. The ditch would still run down there. We'll see the ducks, we'll see the birds. I think that's going to be about as palatable as, as it's going to be. Again, I'm sorry we got off with the school district on the wrong foot, but I, that's not the way I spill transparency. So, if you would, if you would maybe have something of understanding where we get something in writing from the school district. where we get something in writing from the school district, just because I don't trust what they're saying sometime. If I could get something in writing, something of understanding, I don't know, there must be some, is there a legal term that we can, not a contract, but a plan of understanding, Assistant Secretary McCormick? Anyway, that would make me feel a lot better, and I think the group behind me would feel a lot better about it too. So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, John. I had another one signed in to speak for the public hearing on the development agreement. This is Jerry Hackathorn. Come on down, Jerry. Just please state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jerry Hackathorn. I live at 210 East Surge Street in Lemon Valley. I'm not a resident in the area there, but I'm really concerned about losing the green area. A few years back, the Reno area was recognized because of the green areas. Well, now we start taking them away. And I think it's an extremely dumb place to put a school. I mean, we might be a little bit late for that decision there. But they're going to take almost an equal amount of kids from Sun Valley is what they had going to HUG. So, it wouldn't have been much, much worse for the HUG kids to go clear to Sun Valley to go to the school if they'd have picked a pace up there. But like I say, that's probably a little bit late for that. One of the things that I read in this presentation that I looked at online was that it may be a closed campus. And traffic is a severe interest of mine, because I, I'm not real active anymore, but I'm still up and down the road occasionally. And if that's not a closed campus and you dump 1,100 cars out there at noon, or even 500, it's going to be quite a mess. So, that, I think, should be decided early on if it's going to be a closed development, or a closed campus. Also, there's a development that was mentioned earlier, Falcon Ridge. When I do these traffic studies, I don't know how thorough they are to look at what's already approved and under construction in the nearby area. So, that, to me, is another concern to add, that much more traffic in the areas that we have. And they point out a lot of things about McCarran expansion, but that's eight to 10 to 20 years from here. So, we're going to have to live every day. I'm an old man, so I won't have to put up with it for a long time. But we're going to, we're going to have to fight this for a long time. And all of the fancy pictures they've drawn, I just, I don't see that alleviating the situation. I don't have a lot of trust and faith in the school board people that have put, I shouldn't say the school board, the school employees that are presenting this. If they tell me the sun's shining at high noon on July the 4th, I'm going to find a window and look. So, again, I'll say it's a bad location. I don't know, I can't tell you where to put it, but I don't think that's a good one. And I'd like to thank all of you for listening to us and letting us vent a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Were there any other members of the public who'd like to provide public comment regarding the development agreement? Okay, hearing done, I will close the public hearing. We'll bring this back to the commission for questions, comments. Anyone care to have any questions for staff on this item?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fueens.
I have one question for staff, Jim. Go back up. On the traffic study on location E, which is Dandini, which turns into El Rancho and Sun Valley Boulevard, when you project 50% of the population coming down from Sun Valley, I don't see any improvements done on the left-hand turn lane on Sun Valley Boulevard. Was that going to be enough for the traffic study, finding out the, get that up there?
Which is the one at Sun Valley?
Yep.
Okay.
Echo, yeah. So, the left-hand turn lane there with the stacking of the cars, is it the, the staff feel that that's adequate, is how it is right now?
Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. And we do have the applicants' traffic engineer here as well, if you'd like to hear it from him. There's currently dual lifts at that location, and that should be sufficient to handle the traffic that's coming from that area.
Okay. Thank you, Amber. We also heard some public comment about the roundabouts and coming. And I know we've done roundabouts before. There'll be some buses. I'm assuming that will be coming in to these roundabouts. I think the public comment was wanting to know about the width, and probably are they going to, I'm assuming they're going to have truck curtains, those little bumpers that go up. And are the width, because we've had roundabouts before, and they talk about the smaller ones are somewhat of an issue. Are these going to be adequate as far as the diameter?
Yes. So, they would be designed to handle the traffic, and with the school, you would be anticipating bus traffic. If you would like to know exactly, Laura, would you like to talk about the exact width?
No, that's a little bit of the weeds, but...
Good evening. Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation. The roundabouts are absolutely designed for buses. They're actually designed for semi-trucks to be able to maneuver in the case of those, that they would come through that area. So, it will certainly accommodate bus traffic. And too, I remember the gentleman's question as well. He asked about the radius versus diameter. Those roundabouts are generally on the order of 140-foot diameter, which should answer the gentleman's question.
Okay.
If they're appropriately designed.
And then while we got you up here, can we go back to the exhibit, I don't know the exhibit it was, where you're getting your 5% from, coming from the, from essentially Sparks, from the east coming in, and why you came up with that? I think it was a pink diagram about what kind of, currently what the school district is going to be drawing from.
Sure. I'll let Mr. Rundell run the slides. I'm not sure if he's got it in the presentation, but...
Commissioner Fueens, this is the illustration that demonstrates the percentage of anticipated traffic coming from different directions. Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah. And then there was one about where the students are going to be coming from as far as the enrollment. And I think it had a pink overlay.
If we could have the overhead, is that possible?
This one.
That'll work just fine.
This one.
It's on the screen.
The screen's fine. Thank you. Sorry about that. While that pops up, the population of this school is anticipated to be the entirety of Sun Valley, and then basically the current HUG High School zone. If you look at those two areas, they're all north of the proposed site. And it's pretty apparent that the traffic will come down Sun Valley Boulevard and from the HUG zone to the west. We did assign 5% to the east for deliveries, staff, a few students that, you know, could be potentially in that Whittaker area, although that's, you know, there's not a real high concentration of high school-age students there. But we did assign that 5%. We actually did also perform a travel time analysis to compare how drivers would use the Sun Valley route and El Rancho route versus Pyramid Highway. And we found during all times of day, during actual travel times, using Google Maps and other applications, you can very easily see, and I could present, put it up on the board as well, but the travel times are always faster on Sun Valley Boulevard versus Pyramid Highway. So, we're confident that that's the correct assignment of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fueens. Commissioner Brock?
I have a question. There was a question from one of the residences about where the emergency access road is going in.
That is demonstrated on, on the site plan, which is, I think, Exhibit 4. In your packet, it is Exhibit 4. This is the site. I'm going to try to zoom in on it now. It essentially takes the parking area from the west side. Can you guys see the hand on there?
Mm-hmm.
And it connects this access road, emergency access road is identified right here, to connect the parking area to the other side, essentially an access through the middle of the site.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock. Are there any other questions for staff concerning the development agreement? Commissioner Blakow.
I just wanted to see, could you zoom out on that exact picture right there, just a little bit more? I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any kind of shortcuts for students to be taking. I'm still very concerned about that crosswalk on Whittaker and McCarran. Just looking at the crosswalks there, and I've also spoken with a few people just that also would like to express their concern about that intersection in particular and the safety of students in the crosswalk there. I'm just wondering if there, is there any plans to install any kind of signals or anything in any manner to kind of notify the motorists that there might be somebody in that crosswalk?
No, not with this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakow. Are there any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
I just have a couple.
Sure.
Jim, while you're sitting there, if you'll just do some clarification on some, on some of the questions that were raised. As far as the hours, they're concerned about football games going over and things like that. If you can just specify, the school district will have to follow Sparks Code as any other business, correct, or?
Correct.
Okay. So, if you can put that on the record on what the times are, please.
Commissioner Vanderwell, I would request that you ask that question of the school district.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Cersei.
Thank you. So, if you can please put on the record, how late do you think football games are going to go? And are you going to be within the Sparks Municipal Code times?
Again, for the record, Adam Cersei with Washoe County School District. Not precisely familiar with the Sparks Code regarding completion times of high school football games, but certainly this school and any activities at this school would be subject to the same Sparks Municipal Code requirements as any other high school within the city of Sparks.
How about, in your opinion, at other high schools when they're doing night games, do you happen to know what the latest one would go? Or is there a cut, I mean, is there a school district policy that states, okay, at a certain time, you know, the game has to be completed and things like that, for not only safety, just general safety?
I would be speaking out of turn if I answered that question. Not familiar with the active completion times of high school football games. I will add on this topic that it was a significant influencing factor as to the actual location of the football field in proximity to the existing residences surrounding this property, as it relates to the adjacent hillsides, as it relates to the building itself. There was a lot of discussion amongst our design team on the impacts of marching band practice, varsity football games in the evenings, things like that. And the location of that football stadium was driven significantly by these types of concerns. Apologize, I can't answer your question more directly. I honestly don't have that personal knowledge, but certainly those games run well past sundown. That's, you know, why there's lights. We're talking 9:00 PM, in my opinion.
Appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Adam, I'll have you up here. I had a couple questions concerning the development agreement that I was hoping I'd be able to answer for the school district. What are the estimated costs of the off-site traffic and pedestrian improvements related to this project? I know the staff report went into a lot of detail about sidewalks and, you know, roadway, turn lanes. And I just wonder if you had an estimated cost of how much those are at this time?
So, through the process of identifying all these improvements to the degree of detail that we have outlined here, we have done some preliminary cost estimating. You know, I would qualify it to some degree by adding that they're far less than another site, an alternative location would have required roadway extensions, entirely new public infrastructure being constructed. We're fortunate in the sense that the roads and the utilities are essentially at the doorstep of this property. However, just in round numbers, the magnitude of the off-site improvements are anticipated to be in the $8 to $10 million range.
Okay. Thank you very much. My other question was kind of related to traffic, but it's more geared towards rezoning. I read a quote in the media, you know, from the school district, in that this school is designed to last 50 to 100 years. And I was wondering, you know, the school district seems to, you know, do rezoning, you know, fairly often. I think, you know, in the history of Reed High School and Sparks High School, there's been several, you know, rezoning. And so, students, where I'm getting at, students will become, could potentially with rezoning would be coming from other areas of the community. My question is, is, in your opinion, in the design process, will the proposed traffic improvements be able to handle future rezoning changes and maybe traffic patterns from rezoning actions?
Sure. So, you know, first off, regarding school zoning, I want to just highlight that the school board has an advisory committee made up exclusively of citizens known as the Zoning Advisory Committee. And they entertain recommendations from staff regarding zoning, proposed zoning adjustments in public meetings such as this, receive tremendous input, often a very emotional topic. And then ultimately, those, any changes are also approved by the school board. You know, you mentioned a couple of other schools, Reed in particular, have certainly undergone iterations of their zoning boundaries. I would speculate in large part because of the changing nature of the population in that area. It's, you know, anticipated that the Sun Valley area and the existing HUG High School enrollment zone are relatively built out development-wise, and anticipated that will remain relatively static from an enrollment standpoint, et cetera. You know, another point to note, you referenced the off-site traffic improvements proposed to be required of the school district associated with the startup of this school. There are certainly many future off-site roadway improvements, widening of McCarran, Pyramid 395 connector, and lesser road projects of that nature that were not considered, they were not assumed to be completed with our traffic analysis. Should they be completed in the future, it would provide that much more, I guess, relief or flexibility for future adjustments. So, you know, it's difficult to predict the future. I work closely with the team trying to forecast growth patterns and future enrollment adjustments. But, you know, the proposed enrollment zone for this school is likely not going to grow significantly. So, you know, I think for, from, coming from a couple different angles there to answer your question, I think we have some slack, some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I have one more.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
While you're still up there. Can you address the question of the closed campus, since that was questioned and it has to do with traffic?
Sure. You know, the school will be constructed in a manner that will allow it to be operated as a closed campus. That is to say, with a secure perimeter fence, a single point of entry, and the ability to restrict access during school hours. Closed campus, I mean, just for the record, intended to mean that the students are not allowed to leave campus basically during their lunch period. Because that is typically latitude afforded this school principal and that... Because that is typically latitude afforded this school principal and that school principal may change over the course of many years, uh, this question was asked of staff, um, and a detailed traffic analysis was conducted um, to consider the impacts of an open campus with this level of enrollment, and where those students might go during that time period and what the traffic patterns might look like. So, um, let's see, Mr. Chilson up here again, maybe to elaborate in a little bit more detail on it, but in, in essence, um, the development agreement does not restrict the school district explicitly to operating this campus in a closed manner, um, in no small part because of the uh, analysis that was conducted illustrating that, you know, while there will be some offsite traffic during that lunch period hour, uh, we're designing offsite infrastructure sufficient to accommodate the full student and faculty capacity during the peak hour in the AM, um, so during the, the eleven thirty to one thirty period, um, the infrastructure can more than absorb it. I don't know if you want to add to that, Lauren?
Thank you, Lauren Chilson. Mr. Cersei actually stated it pretty well, I think you could uh, work with us as well, but uh, we did conduct a, a lunch period um, analysis and found that the impacts during that time period would not be any greater than was described for the AM or PM peak hours, therefore the mitigations proposed uh, in the development agreement also would cover lunchtime traffic if it were an open campus.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Peterson.
I have more of a comment than I would like to make, if any further questions. As far as a development agreement goes, and the staff presentation on this, which involve quite a bit of hard work as I, well as I see, and I find it in line with our comprehensive plan, and as with any development this size, there are always certain shady areas that can't be covered and you can't possibly see it, and we can only hope that both parties will negotiate in good faith to cover those shady areas when they come, because I've been involved in a lot of developments and there's always unseen things coming up, especially with this unique situation, this particular thing. And I believe that between the two parties, it can be always a thing, I can support this uh, development agreement, because I thought by now, in alignment with the comprehensive plan, and uh, I can only hope that uh, between the city and the developers that uh, they'll negotiate these shady areas in good faith and everybody would be happy, and I know that staff is gonna look out for the city of Sparks and the, their residents, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would.
Does that affect, go ahead.
I move to find the proposed development agreement associated with PCN nineteen zero 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 seven, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson has made a motion to approve the development agreement. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake on the motion. Are there any questions or comments from the commission regarding the motion? Commissioner Fuehlins.
I'll make a comment, uh, just earlier tonight, we approved um, a tentative map for an area up in northern um, Sparks, and in that, Washoe County gave a uh, report that saying Spanish Springs High School is a hundred and twelve percent of capacity, and while, uh, I'll be supporting this motion because I feel like the Wild Creek High School will be helping alleviate that stress in the Spanish Springs High School area. Because we're, we're, and especially in northern Sparks, that's where the growth is heading and when, uh, you know, it's always discerning when we have new projects that come out and Washoe County gives us a, a letter that says, we are a hundred and twelve percent of capacity for our kids. That's very concerning to me, when now we're pressed, the public is coming forward with the WC one pass that says, education is gonna be a priority for us, and it's going to be getting our state to educate our kids, and part of that is infrastructure. And by allowing a school more towards the inner uh, core of the city, I think is very important to give a best opportunity for our children that are out there, so I'll be in support of this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuehlins, any other comments from the commission?
I, I had one quick one I'd like to make before the, the vote. I, I like the proposed development agreement, I think that it provides for a more thorough review of our, of this project, which has unique uh, impacts to the community, and it allows for additional public input and review, what we typically wouldn't see for these types of development. I would like, I'd also like that the development agreement provides several important requirements and very specific requirements, and um, stuff that the school district has to do that we typically wouldn't see within a typical administrative design review or CUP process. I do appreciate that the, that, you know, we are just a recommending body, this is a significant project for the, for the community, I appreciate that it's going to the city council for, for ultimate action, but I'd like to um, extend a thank you to our city staff for their work on this, I think they put in a lot of good effort um, in the language of this development agreement, and I really appreciate Washoe County School District for trying to address the, the identified impacts, and I find that it's uh, in compliance, that this proposed development agreement's in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Are there any other comments on, on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to approve, um, all those in favor of the motion to approve the development agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion's carried unanimously. So we'll move on to the um, next item associated with um, this, this project, and that's conditional use, or CUP nineteen zero 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 three, this is a conditional use permit for the um, minor utility structure. Were there any questions um, from the, for, for the staff concerning the, the conditional use permit for the utility line? Okay, would any commissioners care to make a motion regarding that conditional use permit? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, forgive me, um, is this a conditional use permit request? We do need to do a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the public hearing for CUP nineteen uh, zero 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 three, this is for the utility line um, construction. I have a um, comment card from uh, Ms. Sandra Wagner, do you care to provide some public comment on, on this?
I'm sorry, I don't know which one I have commenting on. Now, would this be the utility line, or would this be, this, that or which?
Yes.
Okay.
Please state your name, um, and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes, Sandra.
Okay, just on this particular session, section, Sandra Wagner. I've been an eighty year resident of the Sparks area, so this is deep in my heart, and I want it to be done, done right. Okay, so, this big line that's going right through the, the uh, school, isn't it, is it the high voltage that has been proven to cause cancer? And we're gonna run that right across the school? Does, I don't understand why that's a good item, a good thing?
Okay, yes, thank, thank you, Sandra, um, you, you can provide public comment and um, and some questions, we can have our staff maybe address those um, a- afterwards. Are there any other?
Okay, I, I guess I should say, I would like to see that line go to the north of the school, not right straight across it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sandra, is there any other um, public comment regarding the conditional use permit for the construction of the power line? Darla, did you want to provide comment on this, okay? Okay, seeing. Looks like George wants to provide some public comment? Okay.
George Lee, thirty-five oh six Brassie Drive, Sparks. Uh, I've seen the uh, the preliminary people up laying stuff out on the hillside, where I assume the uh, this, I assume they're in the boundaries of the corridor, um, but I was gonna bring up something um, that kind of got, just you guys voted on it and you went past it. Already, the school department has been running the school at Spanish Springs at a hundred and twelve percent, and they planned on not running out of space for, they said, till twenty twenty-four, I think they said, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so that means they plan on running it even fuller. So, do all the traffic studies that you just uh, said fine, that's great, um, are all those traffic studies implement, you know, looking at that hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty percent of this twenty-one hundred size? Because I've heard comments of the size of this school being twenty-eight hundred students. The second thing is.
George, if you could.
No, I know, I'm supposed to.
Direct your comments towards the, the power line.
Okay. Yes, the power line is a good idea, I'm for it, you know, I like the idea of the corridor.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide um, public comment on the conditional use permit for the minor utility? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on CU zero 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 three, and bring it back to the commission for um, for action. Mr. Vanderwell.
Mr. Chair, can uh, we have staff come up and address where the power line's actually gonna be?
You bet, thank you.
Because I think there's a confusion over where the lines are and the color of the lines.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell, uh, the public comment earlier on this item was in regard to the uh, proposed location of the transmission line, the current location is the red line that bisects the property in a generally east to west direction, the proposal that, and the regional utility corridor was approved for, is to relocate the line to the north at a forty-five essentially, then east to west movement, and then back south and to uh, intercept the existing location of the utility corridor, so it will not be uh, running over the high school, it will be running in area that is essentially open space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, are there any other questions for, for staff? Okay, commission like to take action on this conditional use permit?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vanderwell.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the Sparks City Council of conditional use permit CU one-nine dash zero 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 three, associated with PCN one-nine dash zero 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 seven, adopting findings C one through C five, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the four conditions of the approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanderwell has made a motion to approve, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I'll give that one to Commissioner, Commissioner Brock, she just beat you out, Commissioner Peterson. Is there any uh, comments or questions on the proposed motion? Okay, hearing none, um, all those in favor of, of approval of, of the conditional use permit, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously, that leads us to our last item associated with Wild Creek High School, that's um, conditional use permit zero 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 four, this is for um, the development, on this, for hillside development. At this time, I would like to open up the, the public hearing, if there's any members of the public who would like to provide com, public comment regarding the hillside development conditional use permit, do so at this time.
George, come on, come on up, I'm just, I.
No, I'm not gonna.
George Lee, thirty-five oh six Brassie Drive, Sparks. I'd like to know what the cost per yard is for the moving of this dirt for this, and where they're gonna put the dirt.
Okay.
I mean, that would be nice to know, uh, I had once had forward a plan to fill in behind the dam, that front side, the south side of the dam, to make the dam even more impervious to uh, failure, which would have taken that, would have completely mitigated the concept of the dam there, but nobody listened to me.
Thanks, George. Come on up.
Kim Tracy, five-five-nine-five High Rockway, Sparks. I would just like to ask that um, some, ask, some questions be asked by all of you as to uh, possibility of running the lines underground, cost comparison wise, aesthetically, obviously, for those of us who live in the area and you're moving those lines closer to our property for the welfare of the wildlife that's in the area and whatnot.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tracy, uh, we're, we're talking about the hillside development.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we, we approve that.
That's right, okay, the other thing I, I guess I wanted to mention though, out of line, was um, as far as the grading of the hills, I'm, I'm hoping that the, they are gonna grade as little as possible and leave as much of the hillside in place as possible, and place the building accordingly, and hopefully you'll address that.
Thank you, Kim, are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide a comment regarding the conditional use permit for the hillside um, development? Okay, I will close the public hearing on uh, CU zero 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 four, and we'll bring this back to the commission for additional questions of staff.
I need to ask staff a question, please.
Mr. Peterson, go ahead.
Jim, this is strictly grading permit, right? Grading approval, they can't go in any of the structure, building on any structures until they get a building department permit, right?
The, this request, Commissioner Peterson, is a request to uh, develop on a site with slope gradients greater than ten percent over twenty-five percent of the site, this conditional use permit is associated with the development agreement that the planning commission earlier approved, the, the uh, conditions of approval, uh, while there are conditions associated with this uh, CUP, were also outlined uh, in the development agreement. The, what I, I, what I explained in the original presentation was, without the development agreement process, that a school district would have had the ability to simply provide a grading permit to demonstrate compliance with the condition, with the hillside ordinance. So this conditional use permit, in compliance with the Sparks Municipal Code for Hillside Development, allows for the construction of the school at the site with all of the associated standards that the planning commission is recommending the city council approve.
Hey, I only asked that question so I could get one comment in. I have never seen a more uglier elevation of a school in my life. And that's the only comment I want to get in.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure that it was designed by architect because of the functions that might be going on in there, that's true, but it looks like a cargo ship lost out in sea.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
That's my, I just wanted to get that comment in, thank you.
Were there any other questions for staff regarding the hillside development commission use, Commissioner Fuehlins?
Jim, will the, uh, I know it's a grading permit, but it, you know, when it comes to disturbing hillsides, blasting's always a concern, uh, could you kind of run, or maybe John can answer the blasting, uh, if blasting's gonna be done or not?
I don't believe we anticipate any blasting with this site, the planning commission did have in their staff report a cut and fill exhibit, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the number.
It's down at the bottom.
There it is. This is a, this is a colored illustration, and the orange identifies where there will be cuts, and the green identifies where there will be fill, so I don't believe, there, as this exhibit illustrates, there's very little uh, grading going on into the open space or north of the property or surrounding area, and um, I don't anticipate the, the man for any blasting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuehlins, are there any other questions for staff? Any commissioners care to make a motion concerning?
I'd like to make the motion if I may.
Mr. Peterson, please.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the Sparks City Council of a conditional use permit CU nineteen dash zero 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 four, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero seven, adopting findings C one through C five, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the four conditions of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, is there a second on, on the motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake, does the commission have any questions or comments concerning the, the motion?
I just, I had one quick comment before, before the vote, I, I concur with staff's I concur with staff's recommendation on this hillside development CUP. I think that the Wild Creek Golf Course is a pretty suitable site in terms of slope gradients, and I find that the proposed school does a good job of avoiding the slopes while allowing for existing golfing to perhaps continue. I find that the proposed conditional use permit is consistent with our comprehensive plan, supports goal MG3, MG4, policy MG11, policy C4, policy C14, policy CC10, and policy RC22. Are there any other comments from the commission regarding the motion to approve? Okay, all those, this time I'll call the vote, all those in favor to approve the conditional use permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much staff. I think at this time, if the commission will indulge me, let's take a five, a five-minute recess before we jump into the code amendments. If everyone could come back at, let's call it eight, 8:36.
That sounds good.
Thank you everyone, I think, I think we're all, we're all here, I'll call the meeting back, back to order. Our final action item on tonight's agenda is CA 1-19. This is a code amendment dealing with telecommunications. Guess we save the best for last, welcome Karen.
I was going to say that, you took the words-
Oh, nice.
Good evening Chairman Carey and Planning Commission, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is an amendment to section 20.03046, which is the wireless communication tower and antenna. We're revising, also revising one definition, existing definition, and adding a new definition. The proposed change, changes clarify the provisions within the section of the Title 20, or section 20, respond to updated Federal Communication Commission requirements, add requirements for small cell wireless facilities and installed, which are installed on private property. As I stated, there are two definitions that were part of this code amendment. The first one is a new, is amending the existing definition for wireless communication tower and antennas. The second definition is a new one, which defines small wireless facilities. Both of these definitions are on page five in my staff report. Accompanying the amendments to the section 2003046, the city council will also be asked to address installation of small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, which will be a new section to the Sparks Municipal Code Title 12. Also, the adoption of a master license agreement. The Federal Communications Commission, or the FCC, issued an order late in 2018, requiring municipalities to allow for the deployment of small cell, or small wireless facilities, which, within certain parameters, limiting municipalities' ability to regulate certain aspects of the small wireless communications, which included aesthetics. The FCC's limitations on aesthetics requirements for the deployment of small wireless facilities will take effect April 15th of this year. Staff is seeking to adopt these changes to Title 12 and also Title 20, along with the master license agreement, to put aesthetics, engineering, and other standards in place for the review of applications from the wireless carriers to install and operate small wireless facilities within the city of Sparks. As people and businesses become more reliant on cell phones and also mobile devices, along with the future role out of autonomous vehicles and 5G network, wireless carriers are working to ensure their networks provide the coverage and capacity or bandwidth. Addressing these anticipated needs, the carriers are proposing small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities are low-powered radio access nodes with a signal range of 30 feet to maybe up to a mile. In other words, a short, a shorter range. Their typical height is 25 to 45 feet, and are usually attached to existing utility light or traffic poles. You can see in my graphic here, on the left here is a typical macro tower. This is a tower within the city of Sparks in our industrial area. This tower is 106 feet tall. On the right side here, I have two illustrations or drawing, photographs of examples of small cells. We do not have any right now in the city of Sparks, but these were photographs from Google Images, actually. And both of these are approximately 30 feet tall. Since the small wireless facilities could be attached to structures on private property, the proposed amendments to section 2003046 includes regulations for installation on private property. Macro cells are typically 90 feet tall, or they're more, like this one here is 106. I handed out to you before the meeting, this afternoon when Brandon and I were rereading to make sure we had fresh in our memory the code, we found a couple corrections that we wanted to make, so I presented those to you today. The first one is under, on page seven, number three. It states there that locational requirements, locating any new tower in a non-residential zoning district. Per the table, which is in municipal Title 20, or section 20, wireless communication facilities are permitted in all zones. So we have, throughout the proposed amendment before you, taking out the word "non-residential." So what we're proposing on the wording is that locating any new tower in any zoning district. And then the other two corrections that we found were on page 13, items E and F, and then also under three, D. Under E, the existing said, "Any ground equipment shall be no more than 28 cubic feet excluding any concrete pad which must be flush with the grade or more than six feet in, six inches, I'm sorry, above grade." We're proposing to reword that, "Any ground equipment may be mounted on a concrete pad, but that must be flush with grade or more than six inches above grade." Under F, the existing wording is, "The proposed size of the small wireless communication facility installed on a pole or structure shall not exceed four feet in height, two feet in width, two feet in depth, and shall not be more than 16 cubic feet unless otherwise approved by administrator." The, we meant to change this one, we don't want to be that specific on our dimensions. Besides, the FCC order also said that it's not supposed to be more than 28 cubic feet. So we're proposing that the total size of the small wireless community facilities installed on a pole or structure shall not exceed 28 cubic feet unless otherwise approved by the administrator. And then the last correction that we would like to make today is the distance between small wireless, the existing that's before you states that the distance between small wireless facilities shall be a minimum of 150 feet measured radially from the center of each facility's pole or supporting structure. And what we would like to add to that is a comment, and it says, "Unless a shorter separation addition, addition, a shorter separation distance is approved by the administrator." So we'd just like to propose that, those corrections. The city staff provided the draft amendment to 36 known wireless companies and representatives and contractors. Staff met with some of the stakeholders and also received written comments. The comments are attached to the staff report, and also the proposed code before you also incorporates the stakeholders' inputs or comments. If adopted, the proposed amendments to section 20 promotes the following comprehensive plan goals and policies. Goals CC1, EV4, EV5, and then also policy EV8, because use of cell phones and other mobile devices are a quality of life for citizens and the businesses of Sparks. Without quality, coverage, and network capacity, Sparks may not be the city of choice, nor attract or retain businesses. Staff is recommending that the planning commission forward approval of our proposed code amendments. That concludes my presentation, and Brandon and I are both available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you Karen, does the commission have any questions for Karen or Brandon? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing item. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on CA 1-19. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? I did have a comment card from Matt Yurgovich. I apologize if I butchered your name, sir.
Can I show, I'll keep it very brief, I assure you. I have some photos of AT&amp;T small cell facilities that I think are a better representation of, no offense, that-
Well, I just took Google with me.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, the AT&amp;T facilities were installed in Reno, so they're very relevant. Yeah, just a flash drive.
Put the flashlight drive, and then-
Thanks Karen.
Okay, perfect, I think it'd be very helpful for, you know, you all to see what we're talking about here.
Okay, once, once they're loaded up, we'll start your three minutes, Matt.
Thank you, and I will keep it brief. Odd, it's got half the, there we go, there it is. Okay, well first, my name is Matt Yurgovich. I work for a company called Vinculums, and Vinculums is AT&amp;T's site developer in northern Nevada. So we do the permitting and the, the construction of the small cell wireless facilities. I want to thank you all for hearing this matter, and thank staff especially, not only for bringing this before you, but also for listening to our feedback from the industry, it makes a big difference in incorporating that feedback into the, the code. We support the ordinance and revisions, and appreciate the city's attention. Small cells, as was mentioned, are critical to address coverage and capacity needs. In function in addition to the towers, the macro sites that you're already familiar with, small cells need to be nestled into the communities on the light poles and the utility poles in order to do their job. And what is their job, it's coverage on one hand, so to fill in the gaps, whether it's in-building or caused by obstructions from trees or topography, that's coverage, right? The, you know, the bars on your cellphone, your ability of your cellphone to get a signal. But lesser well-known is capacity. And capacity is when you've got all the bars on your cellphone, you step outside at 5:00 PM, and so does everybody else in the world to make a phone call, and you can't, you can't make a phone call, your cellphone doesn't work. Small cells are primarily to address capacity needs, so you can make the phone call, check your Google Maps, receive your emails, et cetera, et cetera. The small cells will also be leveraged for 5G, as you can see. So when you talk about five cells, we're talking about 4G technology, which is, we have funded, we're ready to deploy in Sparks today, as soon as this is approved. And, and then in the near future, 5G will also leverage small cells. This is the typical configuration, you've got the antenna canister at the top. For 4G, you've got two radios, approximately the width of the pole. The 5G plan is an additional box, I guess, on the pole. The placement of that, you know, so here at the top, you have the antenna canister for 4G, you've got the two radios below, and then you've got the proposed 5G with an entirely additional array. In some cases, you might have 5G on a pole by itself. In some cases, you might have 5G together with 4G, as you see in this slide. So that's my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, how'd I do? All right.
Good enough, thanks, thanks Matt. Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on CA 1-19. We'll bring this back to the commission for questions or comments. I had one question, Karen, I'm not sure if you can answer it. Do we have any idea of how many of these small cell towers might be located in the city if this code amendment goes through?
We don't know any exact numbers, but you do have to remember that each carrier will be putting up their own small cell, so. I have seen some formulas of estimations, but I, we don't know. It depends on how much coverage, I mean, what our coverage needs and capacity needs are for the city, for each carrier.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions for, for staff?
With AT&amp;T, we have about a dozen.
Matt, come on, come on down, let's just state your name for the record, and you can answer that question.
Sorry. Matt Yurgovich with Vinculums, developer for AT&amp;T. Currently, we've got about a dozen, and, you know, we don't have the 5G plan in place yet. a dozen, and, you know, we, we don't have the 5G plan in place yet, so that's just for 4G. But initially, we're talking about a dozen small cells throughout Sparks.
Okay, thanks for the additional info. And I guess it's good you came up to get your flash drive.
Yeah, thank you for that. Again, much praise for staff and you all.
Hold on, Matt. I think we may have another question. Commissioner Blakow?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out about roughly how much time it takes to put these up. Is it like a quick 30-minute job, or is it days?
It's typically, yeah, typically a day. Ideally, when they do the construction, they like to line up, you know, a bunch of them in a row, and they might have one guy do the welding on, say, like, five poles all in, you know, one day, or, or, you know, whatever, because you have to have, you know, approximately two inch holes for the cables to attach to the radios. And then you line up the install crew. They do some testing afterwards, so they like to allow a construction window of three days, but the actual construction is, you know, it could be done in a day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Armando, wanted to add something?
Chairman Carey, members of the planning commission. Just to, I guess, reiterate a point that Ms. Melby made. The Title 20 amendments, which are, where you're being asked to make a recommendation regarding tonight, you know, pertain to the installation of, of small cells in, on private property. I think the industry anticipates that most of the small cell installation will occur in the public right-of-way. There's still some issues in northern Nevada and in Sparks, certainly with regard to, on what poles. At this juncture, you know, the, the city has a very limited number of poles. And so to the question of construction, how long it might take to construct something, if you're installing a new pole, it's going to need a footing, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's probably a different timeframe than maybe in other communities, because a pole may not be available. So just a point of clarification. Again, that's really in the realm of Title 12 and add Title 20, but again, I just wanted to remind the planning commission that really what we're talking about this evening are the installation of these facilities on private property.
Okay, thank you for that, Armando.
If I may, really quickly, and which would include, the private property would include the utility easements on parcels of land, if, if my understanding is correct. So.
And for the record?
Matt Yurgovich. Thank you, I'm from AT&amp;T.
Okay, there are any other questions for, for staff on this item? Any, would the commission like to take action on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Blakow?
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the code amendment associated with CA-1-19, including the changes that were on page seven and page 13.
Okay, Commissioner Blakow's made a motion to approve with the changes outlined by staff and handed out. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, for, for the second. Are there any comments or questions concerning the motion before the vote? Mr. Vanderwell?
No.
Oh, she's getting ready to vote. I, I, I did have a quick comment to make. I know earlier this, in this meeting, we looked at the CIP, and I know that the city is in need of a lot of revenues moving forward. So I, one of the things that we, I think the city did about a decade ago, which was really good, was dedicate a portion of the franchise fees for cable to go towards parks and recreation. I would encourage the city leadership and staff, if it's possible, when they look at the master license agreement, if there's any additional revenues for these cell towers on city facilities, if that could be dedicated back to the CIP. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay. If I heard the motion to, to approve, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Karen. Okay, that concludes our, our business for, for tonight. We have, our next item on the agenda is public comment. This is our final public comment period. Is there any members of the public who would like to make a general public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the final public comment period, and we'll bring it back to item 13. That's comments from commissioners. Any commissioners like to make any, any comments? Okay. Then, okay, and hearing none, we'll move on to item 14, is adjournment. I'll call, call this meeting adjourned at 8:55 PM. Thank you very much.